Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one City of Gallatin Council Committee Meeting. And first, before we call the roll, I believe that we'd like to all send our thoughts and prayers to everyone near and far who were affected by the storms last Friday night. And as this is going to be our last meeting of the year, we'd like to wish you all of Gallatin a wonderful Christmas, happy holidays, and a safe, blessed rest of two thousand twenty-one. And now we'll have the roll call.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Alexander. Councilman Fan.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
And Councilman Overton.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Next on up, we have the approval of minutes from November ninth, Council Committee Meeting. We have a motion for Councilman Overton and a second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion, any changes? All in favor?
Aye.
A motion passes. Thank you. Next on our list is public recognition. If anyone from the public would like to speak to council, please come forward and give us your name and address.
Good evening, Councilwoman Love. Good evening, City Council. Michelle Juvantz, thirteen thirty-five Long Hollow Pike. I just wanted to just quickly comment on item number five, which is a development on Long Hollow Pike. I live on Long Hollow Pike. And I have concerns that the development is going to change the character of Long Hollow Pike too significantly. Of course, I'm not against that property being developed, but I think that the actual development that's being presented is not appropriate. When I attended the Planning Commission meetings for this, the Planning Commission had a lot of concerns, and the majority of them actually voted to not have this approved. I believe, I'm trying to remember, but I believe that some of the lots in that development are twenty-eight hundred square feet. So if you could confirm that and ask that question to make sure that that was actually true, but that, I remember the chairman of the Planning Commission saying that that was the smallest lots he's ever seen for a single-family home, and he didn't know how that was going to work. So if somebody's asking for something that's smaller than we've ever done and you approve it, that's, you're setting a precedent. It's all we're going to get. Because since I've been watching and paying attention, these lots are getting smaller and smaller. And the five, the five-foot side yards didn't used to be a thing, but now it's all we have that's getting approved. And now if we're going to approve these really tiny lots, that's all that's going to be coming in front of us for the future. So really look at it closely. I think that's a big concern. All right. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Juvantz. Thanks.
I'm Pastor Mark Grubb with Grace Point Church. I too want to speak to item number five. And I want to speak, encourage you to go ahead and move forward with this development. Our church owns part of the property out there that's being considered, and we would like to go ahead and sell that property so that we can move forward with some other ministry opportunities that we have. I think that the development there will enhance the community there. It's also going to free us up to be able to do more ministry in the Gallatin area. So we were looking forward to closing that out and getting ready to go. And, but I understand that everything's got to be done within code. But I just wanted to come tonight, we've brought some of our members tonight, to let you know that we want to encourage you to move forward with the development on the Long Hollow property. Appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor.
My name is Justin Thompson, and I'm seventeen eighty-four B Long Hollow Pike. I'm the only remaining home of the properties in the subdivision. And I'm very much for the development. I believe Meritage has given a, given an ample green space and a very nice layout to this subdivision. And being that I'm going to be remaining there, that was very important to me. And I'm just, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mark McFadden. I live at two one seven Blackthorne Lane in Carrollton subdivision. Our property butts up right against the property address eighteen ten on Long Hollow that they're wanting to develop. And I think that development wouldn't make the city pleasurable to look at with homes packed in in that area, one hundred and fifty homes. And I think if they want to develop it, I could see them maybe develop it with luxury homes, make the lots three, three acres, maybe two and a half acres, maybe put twenty, thirty homes in there and make it nice to look at as people drive by versus homes being sandwiched in there. And people can't go out their door to get a breath of fresh air. They're right on top of each other. And not only that, another one hundred and fifty homes with their Publix going in down the street. It's, Street, Long Hollow Pike, Big Station Camp is going to be a disaster. You got McCain Station going in, you got the other subdivision that's already started behind the Publix with them townhomes. Now, I don't know about you, but I go past there and I look at that, it doesn't look very appealing. People living in those, I don't know how people even buy them when they're living in a parking lot and they got a backyard five foot by five foot with the gas grill, and that's all they have. They're paying three hundred thousand dollars for that. And I don't think it looks very good for the community. And I don't want to see that happen next to me where homes are sandwiched in. It's not going to look good. And it's not going to be good for the community. And I know the builders, they want to come in there, put as many homes as they can to make their money, and off they go. And they don't care what this city looks like. They made their money and away they go. So I wish council would consider, you know, changing the development around, make it more appealing for the public, and not so many homes in there where they're sandwiched in. Because like I said, with that Publix going in, you've got a small intersection right there, and it's going to be a disaster. It's not like the Publix that's going in up there by one oh nine. That intersection is huge. It can handle the traffic. It can handle the Publix. It can handle the townhomes going in over there. But not on Long Hollow Pike and Big Station Camp, you can barely get out of there now. And not only that, on three eighty-six also, to get off of Big Station Camp and sometimes hours of the day with that McCain Station going in, you won't be able to get on, get off that freeway. They're going to have to put traffic lights or something. Then I also noticed on Big Station Camp, they approved to put a turning lane into that subdivision, Something Creek. So keep the flow of traffic going, so people don't hold up traffic trying to turn into their subdivision. It's going to be a mess there if they go ahead with this big plan of one hundred and fifty homes in there. It's not going to be good for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McFadden.
Good evening. My name is Joe DeBoer, and I live at one double oh seven Hart Street here in Gallatin. I'm rising tonight to give a little information that you might digest a little bit of. Ms. Love asked me a question right after we addressed the situation of having to raise our tax, our rates for hauling trash. And we'll give you some information on that issue. And that has to do with the simple fact that I declined to have my trash picked up at sixteen dollars a month. And the reason for that is this. Two weeks ago, I went down to the, to the trash place and took my trash across the scale. From July one to then, it cost me a minimum charge of eight bucks. Now, you say, well, that's kind of interesting. But now here's the catch on that. I have to go down there anyway to take care of recycling. And I had about three or four times as much recycling as I did trash. Now, that's just for one person. But I'm doing this as a way to give people an idea, there's other ways to skin a cat besides one way. So that's for your information tonight, folks. There's other ways to do it besides one way. And if you're going to, and the reason why I did it is because I've got to go down there anyway to take my recycling stuff. And of course, it's closer for me to go to Resource Center than it is all the way across town over here to Long Hollow Pike. And of course, at the same time, I do not know what the money is involved over there with the recycling stuff. If we break even or anything, and I think we don't, then we'll just let the Resource Authority handle the cost of handling the recycling material. So that's something to think about for the future. Number two issue I'd like to share with tonight is we have had a situation by which we have not had our new sign to be put up in front of the City Hall. I don't know what the holdup is, but that's another, that's one of those deals for next year. We need to get that done. Second thing is we have a clock in downtown Gallatin. And it is, it is, tells the right time twice a day, about six, ten in the morning and the evening. And it needs to be fixed. So there's a couple, three things that we need to work at for next year. And with that, I bid you adieu.
Thank you, Mr. DeBoer. Hey, would anyone else like to speak? Okay, see, no one. I'll declare public recognition complete and finished, and now we'll hear our mayor's comments.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments about our neighbors who are suffering so certainly a horrific event, but for a lot of people around us, closest to us in Hendersonville. I wanted to let you all know that our Public Works Department has been helping out down there. We're going to help them with advertising for volunteers when they get a plan in place. But right now, I think we've got two boom trucks and four dump trucks down there working, trying to help them clear out brush. I have been in contact with Mayor Clary quite a bit, and I think Gallatin Department of Electricity told me today that half their crews are working up in Bowling Green trying to help them. So there is going to be a need for volunteers in both of those areas, and we'll share that information as it becomes available. You also know that our Christmas parade was this last weekend. We really struggled about whether it was the right thing to have it or not, considering that there were so many around us hurting. We ultimately decided that, you know, we were going to do what was best for the children of our community, whether they were participating in the parade or planning to view it. And we went ahead with the parade. Required a lot of nimble moves by a lot of people. We had to remark the streets that morning and, and get a lot of things going. But again, our Public Works Department jumped in, helped with the, helped the Police Department because the Police Department had depending, been depending on the EMA, who had to help in other parts of the county. And so they were kind of our heroes that day. But the parade, by and large, was wonderful. I hope you got to see it. You can actually watch online if you didn't see it in person. And I want to give a big kudos to Gallatin Parks and Recreation. Their, their float and their entries were quite amazing. If you didn't see it, the theme was past, present, and future. And not only did they have these really cool, large figures that were spinning as they went down the road, they also had a big float that showed past, present, and future of our playgrounds. It was the original rocket slide, which a few of us up here remember, from the old, what we used to call the new park, but municipal park. And then from nineteen ninety-seven, the Kids Kingdom, the old wooden playground that was over by the Civic Center. And then from twenty twenty-one, the Miracle Park. So it was really cool. It was really well done, and I was pleased to see that. Also, I want to thank Public Works and all those who helped last week with the tree light, well, I guess it's probably the week before. I don't know. Their holiday events are kind of running together. The tree lighting and tuba Christmas, because we also did those two events. And so we've had a lot of fun with the holidays, but I do request that everyone keep those in their thoughts and prayers that are suffering, because not everybody's having all the joy of the holidays that they deserve. So we will continue to help as we can, and I know this community will hold everyone close. We do wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, and it was to a better year next year. Feels like we came out a little bit this year, but we still have a ways to go to get back to some semblance of normal. So we will all hope that everyone finds holiday blessings and that they have a new year full of, of good things. So that would be all.
Ms. Love, if there's no objection, there's a lot of people here on number, item number five, can we move it up to number one if there's no objections?
Objection? No, that'd be fine with me. So we'll move that forward. Thank you, Mayor. And so now, first on our agenda will be what was number five. Bill McCord is going to explain that to us.
Okay, Council, Bill McCord, city planner. This first item I'm going to present to you tonight is a request to rezone a fifty-seven point five acre parcel of land. It's actually four parcels all used to one another, and it's located on the north side of Long Hollow Pike to the east side of the Carrollton subdivision. This pointer, the laser pointer doesn't work on the screen. So that is the Carrollton subdivision immediately to the west, and this is just east of Big Station Camp Boulevard. The applicant intends to rezone the property from agricultural residential to R eight medium-density residential plan, residential district, and has a master development plan that they're proposing to construct if they are successful with the rezoning. The master development plan calls for one hundred and fifty-eight single-family lots, public streets with a connecting street to Long Hollow Pike, and other two stub streets to the properties to the east should they ever redevelop. And also substantial open space tracks that will be surrounding the properties. Again, that's schematic, that shows you the topography. The extreme northern portion, which is on the left side of the screen, is, has extensive slopes, so they're retaining that area within common open space and not intending to develop that. This slide that you see here demonstrates the areas that will be developed for the streets and the lots and the open space. Say, open space be shown, is shown in a green pattern. And this will include an extensive, over two hundred feet of open space between Long Hollow Pike and the fronts of lots that will back up to alley-loaded product. So the front of the house would face Long Hollow Pike on those lots that are on the southerly portion. Keep in mind, again, the slide that you're looking at, south is to the right side of the slide, north is to the left, and east is to the top of the slide. And of course, west is to the south side. That shows you where it is in proximity to the Carrollton subdivision as well. This plan does provide a substantial amount of open spaces as was presented tonight. The smallest lot would be thirty-six hundred and seventy-five square feet, and those are the attached, or excuse me, they're detached, and I can't point to them, but I think you can see where those are located. Those are not visible from Long Hollow Pike. The larger lots would. These lots range from thirty-six seventy-five up to almost twelve thousand square feet. So there's a variety of lot sizes in the development. Most of them are in the six thousand square foot range. These would all be single-family homes detached units, and the smaller lot sizes would be alley-loaded garages. So you won't, you'll have their front facing an open space track or common open space track. And you can kind of see the pedestrian system in addition to the sidewalks that will line the streets. You have a sidewalk that would be built and extended along, along Long Hollow Pike, as well as in crisscrossing a couple of the open space. And there is a pond in the north central portion of the site, which would be retained as part of the common open space. So there's a lot more open space than is required as a minimum in the R eight district. I want you to know that the Carrollton subdivision next door is also zoned R eight and contains a variety of lot sizes, very similar to what they're proposing here. The smaller lots in Carrollton are generally in the center and northerly portion of their development. They actually have some attached units in Carrollton as well. So this is not unlike what you would, would see in Carrollton as well. The density in here is within the confines of what's recommended in the comp plan for suburban, established, emerging character area. So there's an extensive discussion here. As was mentioned, the Planning Commission did not recommend approval of this rezoning and master plan. The staff does recommend approval of this, of this ordinance. So if there's any additional questions I can answer, I'll be glad to. And perhaps the applicant would want to add some information for you as well and answer questions.
At the Planning Commission meetings, we, both meetings that this came before, we talked about the small interior size of the lots, and that's really the, the main problem that we had with it. The Carrollton lots are not as small as these. That question was asked, and these are smaller. We asked the developer to please make the interior lots larger, and I guess he didn't do that. And so that's the reason that it's before you all.
Lyndon.
Jimmy.
Go ahead. She, she had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was the island.
I believe the developer is here to talk about this because I had a conversation about, what I saw was there was ten lots only above point two zero, an acre. That's all I saw. And that the rest of them were under the point one five. So there are one hundred and fifty-eight lots, and I think the conversation was that they would do something about taking out a few of those lots.
Is the developer here?
Lyndon, I had an opportunity to talk to a representative from the developer today, ask him, would they be willing to increase the size of the lots? And he told me they would be glad to do that. So at this time, because of that, I think this thing needs to go back to Planning Commission. They've agreed to make some changes to this plan, and I don't think that's something we need to do. I think it needs to go back to Planning Commission. They've agreed to do that, and I want to be fair to these folks. And so with that being said, I more recommend that we send this back to Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Councilman Overton and a second by Councilman Hayes, I think, to send that back to planning.
New recommendations from the developer.
With the recommendation that the developer is willing to enlarge some of these lots. Is there any more discussion or?
I have another question. One of the things that came up in a letter from the pastor was something about a streamside salamander that is an endangered species, and they cannot be, I don't know what can be done on the property, but if that's something that has to be addressed by this developer.
You just have to protect certain width off the, off the stream, right? And there's some kind of?
There, there is an intermittent stream that runs through the southerly portion, and that's in that open space track close to Long Hollow Pike. That's a state requirement, federal and state requirement. So the developer's having to satisfy that for the state.
Okay, so they know about have, having to do it.
And I have a feeling that it probably impacted the church because they're trying to build a large building, and then with smaller buildings, that can more.
But this particular incident came up in another area where there was hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of work that had to be done in order to preserve that, that area. So.
It is, the streamside salamander has not been our friend in Gallatin, that's for certain.
Well, this one was actually in Hendersonville, the one I know.
Oh, good. Maybe they're moving down there.
They're swimming along.
You know, you wouldn't believe how many times I've gotten yelled at about the streamside salamander, and I generally agree. I think God intends for them to be extinct.
I did some research on them, so I've got a photo. They're not so pretty.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second on, is there any more discussion about the?
I would suggest that you give the representative, you know, a comment to see if they have any question, I mean, since you're here. I thought that you were here.
Be all right with me. Would you like to say anything? Just make sure you give us your name and the address, too. Yes.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Casey Keister. I'm with Meritage Homes of Tennessee. We've had this project under contract for several months now. And our intent, whenever we get a piece of property under contract, is to work with the city on a development that is a high-quality development for us, and is a partnership with the city and a high-quality development for the city. So early on, we scheduled a prelim meeting with Mr. McCord to discuss zoning options, future land use plan. Like he mentioned, the density here is in line with your current comprehensive plan and the suburban emerging. I believe right now we're at a two point seven units per acre, right around that number. So we're looking at, you know, what the future land use plan is, making sure we fit into that guideline that the city has put together. We look at neighboring subdivisions such as Carrollton, so they are zoned R eight. So that's why we are requesting an R eight zoning as well. As was mentioned previously, they have some very similar lots to us. About half their subdivision is the same character of lots that we have, between thirty-eight hundred and a little over six thousand square feet. So the meat of their subdivision matches the character of ours. Their smallest lots are smaller than ours because they do have some detached product. But they also have some of this reloaded product similar to ours where it's almost an identical width to our product of a twenty-four, twenty-five foot wide product. Their lot is about thirty-eight hundred square feet, and ours is about thirty-seven hundred square feet. So it's very similar to what we're seeing next door. And then they have a significant amount of lots that are around six thousand square feet, and we're proposing a significant amount of lots that are around six thousand square feet. So we're in line with the city's comprehensive land use plan, future land use plan, in line with some of the, the neighboring community there. And we've preserved a significant amount of open space. As mentioned, it's over fifty percent open space, so we've got that stream up front, the rising hill in the back, and we're maintaining an existing pond. As you mentioned with the streamside salamander, one of the first things we do is what's called a regulatory constraints analysis, which understands wetlands, ponds, streams, and any endangered or threatened species. So we have an understanding of what's on the property, what's going to impact it, how we appropriately buffer stream. So, we've engaged in that process as well. We've done a full traffic impact study to understand how our proposed community would impact the Long Hall of Pike and Big Station Camp. And that came up with a few road improvements that are reflected on this plan that we've proposed. It's going to be additional turn lanes and widening in front of our property. But the traffic impact study determined that there'd be no negative or necessary requirements at the intersection with Big Station Camp. So, we've adhered to that. We've met with multiple council members, have reached out to several of the others of you, and unfortunately haven't had time to actually set up a meeting. But we see this as a partnership between us and the city. As you mentioned, Ms. Love at Planning Commission, there were different discussions about plans, lot sizes, a little confusion about what the minimum lot size was or what our side setbacks are. But we've got full five-foot side setbacks on all these lots. When we first went to planning commission, we had 163 units, and even that front row was the smaller lot size. So, when we came back the second time, we had widened those front lots to be over 5,000 square feet. And being rear-loaded lots from Long Hall of Pike, what you're going to see is the front facade of a home. So, it's about 200, 300 feet off of Long Hall of Pike. So, you have a decent amount of green space and stream there in the front, and then you'll see an attractive front facade of a home there with a widened lot size. So, that was the change or advancement we made from first planning commission to our second planning commission. And as Mr. Overton mentioned, you know, if that middle section is a kind of sticking point or a point of contention with commission or council, we'd be happy to engage in conversations of increasing those to a minimum of 5,000 square feet to match the character that we've added to the front row that you'll see from Long Hall of Pike. So, then all our homes would be on a lot over 5,000 square feet. You know, we think it's a great project that fits the character and the nature of the neighborhood, fits the city's future land use. And we've had, like I said, multiple meetings with council members, staff, and are happy to, to continue those conversations and work with the city to provide a plan that's beneficial for everyone involved. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, even though after there was a motion. I would be happy to answer any additional questions you all may have.
Have any more questions? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Well, we'll have the vote to send this back to planning. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Now, we'll go back to what was number one on our agenda, which will, has to do with the Gallatin EDA with Mr. Fenton.
Good evening, James. I'm with the Gallatin Economic Development Agency. And in 2017, with this body, had their first strategic planning session in quite some time. My board and the industrial development board also began having an annual retreat to, to put together their strategic plan. And every year, we've had a report from that, and we're going to do the same thing this year. So, it's my pleasure to introduce the chair of my board, Ms. Jeannie Gregory.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm happy to be back for the fourth year to share the Economic Development Agency's strategic plan. As James mentioned, I'm Jeannie Gregory. I have the pleasure of serving as the chair of the board. Some of our board members are here with me. You'll recognize most of these folks. They give a lot of time for the betterment of our community. Here are Tom Neal, Richie Harville, Dwayne Scott, may or may not be here, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Oh, awesome. And Tim Hurdle. Our EDA board, along with the members of the industrial development board, met in mid-August to review the strategic plan and revise it for the 2022 fiscal year. First and foremost, let me start by saying how much we appreciate the support of the mayor and you city council members. You already know we have a fabulous city, and we have a great story to tell. So, as James mentioned, four years ago, we did our first strategic plan specific to Gallatin EDA. Our top focus for business recruitment was technology, specifically data centers. And as you're aware, we found considerable success in that arena. In year two, our focus shifted to workforce development, particularly in the tech fields. James worked with the Nashville Area Tech Council and Volunteer State Community College to bring the GO Tech program to Gallatin. If you're not familiar with GO Tech, it's a way to gain many tech jobs, certifications in an expedited amount of time, and move quickly into the tech workforce, often with a guaranteed job once you graduate. In year three, our focus turned to business parks and corporate headquarters and office space. As you may have seen in our annual marketing book, we've been promoting several sites in Gallatin for headquarters, whether it be strictly office space or a combination of a company having its headquarters, along with research and development, or advanced manufacturing here. EDA is working with the developer currently, who has plans to build some 25,000 square feet of spec office space, which will help in our recruiting efforts. Due to the pandemic last year, an equally important focus was placed on our existing industry and our distribution partners. Your EDA staff did a great job during the pandemic helping all of our existing industries. Work in the Gallatin EDA did not slow down. It actually got busier, helping companies navigate all the federal rules and programs. And it got busier still with companies moving here or expanding here. In fact, in the calendar year 2020, staff worked with seven new or relocating companies that have chosen Gallatin, ranging from high-tech fabric manufacturing to construction to environmental remediation. Since January of this year, EDA has facilitated 86 million in additional capital investment in our city with more than 1,000 new jobs. Here we are in year four of our strategic plan. What is our plan for this fiscal year? We must add amenities to Gallatin to better position the city for corporate and back office jobs. Amenities include everything from elevated dining and shopping options to reducing the areas of blight. Our plan includes bolstering and highlighting our core historic downtown, the areas in the blocks around the square, again, to remove the blight and allow for elevated businesses that contribute more revenue to the city while attracting visitors and residents to downtown. We must make it easier for companies moving here or starting up here to navigate zoning by implementing form-based codes. We urge you to support form-based codes, something that will be brought to you by the planning department. It will increase our flexibility, particularly in the downtown area, and make it easier to attract new businesses. While we want to target corporate and back office operations, we're still open to manufacturing. However, we're very selective in the type of manufacturing we court. EDA only responds to RFIs where companies indicate they will spend $750,000 or more per employee in capital expenditures, as well as paying a good, solid entry-level wage to its employees. Our goal is to continue to see Gallatin's per capita and median incomes continue to rise, which they have. Since 2018, annual per capita income has risen by $6,400, while the annual median income has risen by $10,700. Put in perspective, in 2018, per capita income was $26,544, and the median was $49,041. This year, per capita is now $32,000, just under $33,000, and the media, median, just under $60,000. One of the challenges we're facing is that Gallatin has no more city-owned industrial property. Staff is working with Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development and TBA on a preliminary review of potential sites for industrial development. Again, we'd be selective in what we pursue. We want to take Gallatin to the next level in business recruitment, elevated pay, more office jobs, and more tech. This transition will not happen quickly. Our target market is tech-enabled services, companies that create or consume technology, whether it's physical or infrastructure, or hardware or software that they design and deliver to the end user. It took three years from the first conversations to announcement day for Facebook. Three years. That's not unusual. This field is more competitive than manufacturing, so it will have fewer large successes, but they will be more impactful on our community. We have some internal work to do. The Gallatin EDA can do a better job of telling our story, whether it's internally to you or our other stakeholders, or to our community in general. Gallatin has a renowned, renowned, and respected team in the economic development circles statewide and regionally. We need to share our story better. You may have heard, Jasmine Graham will not be returning from maternity leave. She's accepted a job as the executive pastor for her church. It's a great opportunity for her, and we wish her well. We are in search of her replacement. Coming before you later tonight is a request to reclassify her position. It's designed to allow the new person to come in at the level Jasmine was being paid when she left. As you all know, the job market is very tight. We hope you'll support this reclassification to give us the best chance possible to hire a very strong replacement. Thank you for giving me time to speak tonight. I think I speak for me and all my fellow board members when I say that we truly enjoy serving Gallatin and on the EDA board. We have much to be grateful for and a lot of opportunity to look forward to. Merry Christmas to each of you and your man.
Thank you, Jeannie. And thank you, all of you all that serve on that board for doing such a great job and working so hard with that. And we do appreciate all that you do. And you are doing wonderful things for the city, and it looks like a lot of good things coming. So, thank you. Okay, next up, number two, Chuck Stewart will be talking about a, or someone that doesn't look like Chuck Stewart will be talking to us.
Can't be Chuck Stewart if it's Scrooge.
Good evening, council. Emily Scrooge, AKA Chuck Stewart Beneficial. I bring to you tonight 432 Pace Street, a dangerous building. This building is in disrepair. We have been keeping an eye on it. It is further deteriorating. Roof caving in, the windows are broken, the doors are hanging off of it, the floor is starting to go through now. And it's unsanitary, uninhabitable, and a public nuisance. And we'd like to bring it to you for a show cause hearing. The owner, Ms. Rogan, received her certified letter and returned it on October 30th, right there at the end of the month, and we haven't heard from her.
Susan, what date you want to do, show cause?
We have several that are coming on January 4th. I don't know if you want to add it to that list. Mr. Stewart, is that your preference?
That's my preference.
Make a motion. We said it for a show cause hearing on January the 4th? Is that what you said, Susan?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
All right, we had a, a motion by Councilman Overton and a second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any more discussion on this? See none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Number three is also presented by...
Give me a minute on this one here. This is ordinance 2202201-3. It's the, one of the things that I worked with the city attorney on here was to take four, five, three, four ordinances and combine them into one because they were so scattered through the code that for you to look and see, we took electrical on, we took gas on, swimming pools came down, we had to ordinate those in as the code changed, and we had them in different places. We brought them all together and got them in one ordinance now. And we also have a new fee schedule that I'm asking for a fee increase. We haven't had a fee increase on building code fees since 2014.
What do you want to raise it to, Chuck?
Well, we have gone from two cents to five cents per square foot increase on the permits that we do on square footage. We have gone from $3 to $5 on some of the permits that we do an individual fee on. That, let's say for a, a inspection fee was $65, we went to $70 on a fee like that.
There's a whole schedule there in, in your, in your package in there. You can see
where we move things.
Stewart, why do you want to do this?
Well, we need to raise fees because growth has to pay for growth. You know, citizens don't pay for growth in this city. That's not what they're here for. They're, they pay their taxes for the police, fire, their infrastructure. But the developers, contractors need to pay for the growth out thereself. My department, when I arrived here, I had five people. I'm pushing 20 now. Well, we run the number of inspections and the number of permits we're running. So, I do a takeoff on what it costs me to operate for my department with all the fees, with all the pay that has to come up, which is retirement, health insurance, benefits, gas, trucks, everything. And I break it down to how many inspections, how many permits I'm putting out. And then I come back and try to bring that number into, into the, into the equation. My best number that I've come up with right now with these fee increases would raise about $350,000 a year more in permit fees. That's where I'm, I'm sitting on it.
Mr., you give them plenty of notice, correct?
Normally, after you pass it, we give them 45 days. We send the fee schedule out with the inspectors to give to the contractors. So, they all got a copy of it. We put it online. And we normally wait about 45 days before we, we, we bring it in. It may take us longer than that now because of the intergub getting the system where the, the things pull. We struggle a little bit getting that, so all the testing on the system before we turn it on. So, they'll have anywhere from 45 to 60 days' notice.
Motion sent on.
Got it.
Okay, we had a motion by Councilman Alexander to, to send this to council, and I believe a second by Councilman Hayes. Is there any more discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Now, number four is also going to be presented by Mr. Stewart.
Number four is the ordinance amending the ordinance for Gallatin, Mr. McCord, fireworks in the fire protection prevention visionary. What we're proposing here is to raise the fee for firework tents from $1,500 to $2,500, give them an extra week ahead of time to sell them. In other words, we shut them off on the same date. We'll start them a week earlier. That was one of the problems that we had with them. They run out of time trying to get, and get their tents set up. We called a few other jurisdictions around. That puts us in line with them. At $2,500, I don't think it's going to slow them down, council, but I think that that's a fair price of $2,500 for a fireworks stand.
Send it on.
Second.
And a motion by Councilman Hayes and a second by Council, by Vice Mayor Finell. Is there any more discussion on this? None. All in favor to move this on, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, council. I'd like to wish you all a Merry Christmas. And if you're wondering about my wife and I tonight out here, we did the Dickens of a Christmas. We need one in Gallatin.
Yes, Chuck is a huge proponent of the Dickens of a Christmas, and so we are discussing an 1802 Christmas here in Gallatin for coming here.
Certainly does look good, and so does his wife.
He's going to be in charge.
Sounds like a great plan.
That's usually what happens when you bring it up.
Okay, thank you. Going down to number six on our agenda, this is Mr. McCord again.
Real quick. Okay, oop, let's back up. Okay, council, this next item is a request by the property owner to donate some property to the city. And this property is located on the north side of Nashville Pike, Highway 31E, on the east shore of East Camp Creek, which is technically still part of Old Hickory Lake at this point because it extends back into this area. This was the original proposal, that they were intending to maybe donate just the southerly portion. But now they've decided, after they plotted the subdivision, to increase the size of that area. This was a, initially, the plan that was presented, I guess, back in April. So, this was, this is not the first time y'all have heard of this proposal. So, that was part of the site plan that you see there of the apartment complex. It's, was approved. And the blue line there is the floodway. So, most of the property that we're talking about is in a flood zone. The site plan for the apartment complex includes all the property adjacent to Tulip Poplar. And they essentially, oop, and I didn't have it in there. They are essentially going to provide, and it's included in your agenda package, Lot 3, which is about eight acres adjacent to the creek, almost all within a flood plain. So, you couldn't build structures in there. You could go in there and build something at the surface level. So, you could have maybe an athletic field or something like that, which could be flooded. And even though this is part of the lake, it does rise up occasionally after heavy rains. The greenway corridor is scheduled to go through this area, or the alignment is currently shown to go through this area. Actually, this will be an important junction point underneath the railroad bridge there because that's how you would get to the north side of the railroad tracks without having to cross the tracks. And this will be also connecting to Tulip Poplar Drive and then extending on to the west, parallel to Nashville Pike. So...
Motion sent on.
Second.
Okay.
Okay. Hey, we have a motion by Councilman Hayes.
or something on it? Is that what we're talking about, Mayor? Do you know?
That's only use I can imagine.
Okay, I'm good.
All in favor? That's only way it's going to get taken care of, so...
That's right.
All in favor to send this on, say aye. Any opposed? Say no. Okay, that motion passes. We're ready for number seven, which is also going to be Mr. McCord.
And this last item for me tonight is a request for approval of a resolution to adopt redrawn urban growth boundary. And y'all may require, remember, there's a pretty long and laborious process that involves a lot of other local governments in the county, including the county, to amend this urban growth plan, which was originally approved back in 1999, effective in 2000, so it's been 20 years. Statute establishes that for 20 years, so we're now renewing this. Other communities in the state are doing the same thing. And so, it's gone through the coordinating committee. Y'all passed a resolution back in January endorsing some changes to that urban growth boundary. I'll show you those. The committee, County Coordinating Committee endorsed those changes, had two public hearings, and that's why it's back before you now for ratification. What this is, is the current urban growth boundary, Gallatin being in the red or orange and light orange. Hendersonville is in the blue and light blue, and then the remaining portion is county. And so, that's what it is out there on the west side. This is on the west side of town out near Long Hollow Pike, Okana area. And so, what y'all wanted to do is add in the area that's kind of in purple there, I guess, and that will become part of Gallatin's urban growth boundary. So, Okana, and that includes the new schools that they're building out there and the park out there between the two schools. On the north side of Long Hollow Pike, you can see Hendersonville is adding that little strip there on the south side of Long Hollow Pike. Another area that was changing is on the extreme west end of town in what was historically the Avondale Community. And this is a property that was annexed into the city back in 1971, and then, of course, anything that was in the city limits was included in the original urban growth boundary. So, of course, Gallatin's in the orange, light orange pattern here. And what's happened since adoption of the urban growth boundary is 386 has been extended through there, and some disruption to the street pattern has occurred. So, what we have is a portion of this properties or several properties that are north of the CSX Railroad that you have to drive into Hendersonville about almost two miles to get back access into Gallatin. So, this one is going to be an unusual one that may mean that, and we're still working on this, that we would revise the resolution that you have before us to make the effective urban growth boundary on this portion at the time of a de-annexation that would occur, which was discussed also with the committee. The result of that would be going from this pattern here that we have to de-annexing that area that's in gray there. So, again, everything in the blue is in the Hendersonville urban growth boundary, and we're light blue in the Hendersonville city limits. And then, this gray pattern would essentially be de-annexed because it's not accessible to the city, and we have very minimal services into those properties anyhow. And that would revert back to the county and possibly be eligible for annexation by Hendersonville. Rogers Group owns the majority of this property, and then there's some very small parcels that I think have three houses on them. Again, it's about almost two miles to get there just from the city limits of Gallatin, much less from the fire hall that's further off to the east across from Ball State. And so, and then the last part that was amended is this little strip. It's really an easement for a road, a private road, that extends through the middle of the Rogers Group facility there off of that big Station Camp Boulevard and extends down to Lower Station Camp Boulevard. So, we are essentially surrendering that, and that would become part of the Hendersonville urban growth boundary because Hendersonville has their city boundary on both sides of that easement, private road. So, that would be the combination of the changes that were approved, both by this body and as well as the coordinating committee at their two hearings.
Motion sent on.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Hayes. Is there any more questions or discussion? See none, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. McCord. Number eight on our agenda is presented by Rachel Nichols from Finance.
Good evening. Several weeks ago, I mentioned to y'all that I would be bringing some of our policies forward to update them and establish some new policies, trying to get us lined up for our next bond issue so we get a better credit rating. Our credit rating's really good, but we want it to be really great. We really want to beat the county on our credit rating. So, we're putting some policies in place, changing a few of our policies, and number eight is the first one I have this evening. Back in 2011, I believe it was, this body approved a fund balance policy. Tonight, I would like to, one, change the name of that to be the general fund policy because this policy only applies to our general fund. And I would also like to request that instead of the 20% that we set aside as our rainy day fund, that you consider increasing that to 25%. That would be the equivalent of a 90-day reserve of operating expenses. Again, it just presents us in a little better light of being even more physically sound and having more conservative financial practices.
That would become effective with the '22, '23 budget year?
Yes, ma'am. Unless you want to backdate it and we can...
We can. I mean, we've got the money, so...
We could do either.
I just think we need to clarify. That's my point.
I did the calculations that if we implemented it now, it would be about a $1 million, $950,000 increase that would be set aside in our rainy day fund. And as you said, we have the money. If something were to come up and our balance went that low, it would require five votes from council to make any additional appropriations.
Questions from Ms. Nichols?
I think it's a great policy, and I think it's one that not only will it look good to the ratings agencies, but to our residents, and something that we can do that a lot of other cities cannot do.
Motion to send it on. Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Fennell and a second from Councilman Fann. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number nine and 10 will be...
Number nine will be creating a policy very similar to the one that you just approved for the water sewer and gas funds. Again, we would like to have this in place with a 25% operating cost expense set aside as their rainy day fund, going to the bond world and the investors that we are conservative in our approach to our money, and just putting into policy a practice that we're already doing.
Motion to send on.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Vice Mayor Fennell and a second by Councilman Hayes. Any questions or more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries also. Number 10, Ms. Nichols.
And the last one I have for this evening is to update our capitalization threshold. That's an internal item for the finance department as far as what we report as a fixed asset. We initially had those numbers set at $10,000, $4,000, $5,000, and every item that we purchased or lots of items that we purchased, we were tracking. Since costs have increased as they have, that's become a little burdensome, and the only reason that outside companies track these items is if they want to sell their company, that's how they value it. Well, we're not going to sell the city, so not a great need for us to have those lower numbers. So, we would like to recommend raising the limits on buildings, improvements other than buildings, and then all of our equipment and furniture.
Motion to send it on.
Second.
And a motion from Councilwoman George and a second from Councilman Overton to send that on. Is there any more discussion on that? See none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. And this is not totaled, but the next item on our agenda is number 11.
Good evening, Council. Good to be here. Nick's a little under the weather, so he sent me in his place. All right. I have number 11. I'm here to present an ordinance, 02201-2, appropriating funds, receiving an amount of $5,246 from insurance claims damage to traffic signals.
Motion to send on.
Okay, we've got a motion to send it on to from Vice Mayor Fennell and a second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? No. That motion carries. Thank you. And on to number 13.
13, I'm back with you. Here to present Resolution Number R2201, accepting the public improvements by the City of Gallatin in Cumberland Place North, Phase Three, Section Two.
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion by Councilman Hayes and a second by Vice Mayor Fennell. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. That motion carries. Thank you. And on to number 13.
13, I'm back with you. Here to present Resolution Number R2201, accepting the public improvements by the City of Gallatin in Cumberland Place North, Phase Four, Section Two.
And we've got a motion by Councilman Hayes and a second by Vice Mayor Fennell. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. That motion carries. Thank you. And on to number 13.
13, I'm back with you. Here to present Resolution Number R2201-2 for accepting the public improvements by the City of Gallatin in Cumberland Place North, Phase Four, Section Two.
And we've got a motion by Councilman Hayes and a second by Councilman Alexander. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That also carries. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, number 14, and this is...
Bill, Ms. High McCollough and I will take this. Ms. Kitchell had intended to lead the decision, but as it turned out, she couldn't be here this evening. And so, as you know, well, you may not know, but Ms. Kitchell brought this up to me quite some time ago because she felt like she was getting so many requests and that maybe with the growing city that we need to reexamine our current limits on liquor store license per capita. And then, we had someone come in public comment at one period asking the same question. And so, I felt like it was important that this council considered this, look back at what we did, when we did it, and how the times have changed, and how, you know, what the benefits might be to expanding the number of licenses we grant and what the cons may be. So, it's open to your discussion. We put some information in here that shows, you know, where we are right now. I think it was in 11 or what year did it, 14?
14.
In 14, we moved it to per 12,000. I think it was previously at 7,000 or 8,000.
At 4,000.
4,000. And so, right now, where we are, we would have no more liquor stores until Gallatin reached the population of 96,000, which I don't see anytime soon. So, in full disclosure, I happen to know, because I'm a bit of a geek about other cities' meetings, the City of Hendersonville is actually considering increasing their population. They're currently at the same number we are, and they are considering increasing. I would not be in favor of that because that just, I think, really would favor some with opportunity and shut the door on others with opportunities.
If we was to release another liquor license, would it be, are you just wanting to recommend one or more?
That would be up to this council, and we would also have to go through the steps to figure out how we would make that opportunity available, whether it would be...
Yes, that would be the issue. And I did provide to each of you tonight on your desk the current, our current ordinance, the full ordinance, and then I gave you just a brief summary of the ordinance, where we are currently and what other cities, what their limits are. And the issue would be, if you decide to lower our limits or, you know, to change it any way, how do you determine who gets those licenses? And what other cities have done is they've done some type of lottery where, you know, people put, or companies, whomever puts their name in, and there's some type of a lottery. We can't promise one to any one person because they came and asked at a public meeting or otherwise. Ms. Kitchell and I both get calls repeatedly asking for, you know, for a liquor license, and we tell them that we cannot issue any further at this time. So, we would have to come up. I think tonight, we just need to determine, do you want to make a change? And what our code says is upon proof of materially changed conditions, the city council may alter, amend, or change its determination concerning the general availability of alcoholic beverages or the adequacy of service in the city. And that determination cannot affect those retail liquor licenses that are currently in use. So, in other words, if you ever decide to increase it, you can't take anyone's away that currently has one.
Susan, could we... I'm sorry, Paige. Go ahead.
I just want to add one thing to what she said today, and no, two things, actually. In the department head meeting, someone brought up that somewhere, they actually bid out the liquor license.
That's what I was about to ask.
We don't know if we can do that in the state of Tennessee. That's something that we're checking on. And then, the second point I wanted to make is, you know, from one perspective, the per capita formula is a bit anti-capitalistic, and, I mean, this is my opinion, and really kind of antiquated. So, there are some cities that don't have a per capita, but I also don't want to negatively impact existing liquor stores. I think that this was considered and changed back when wine was going up, was becoming available to sell in grocery stores. And so, I think the population in Gallatin, some of you who are here then may remember, but I think that's why that population was increased because they felt like liquor stores were going to be at such a disadvantage. I think it's safe to say that our liquor stores have prospered in spite of that in recent years. But those are just a couple of thoughts. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, I was going to ask the same thing, but I'd rather, I wouldn't want to see a sealed bid. I'd want it to be an open bid, if we can do that.
That's, I don't know. We've got to research that, I don't even know if that's a possibility in Tennessee. I don't know any other cities in Tennessee that do that. Most, if you look on what I handed out to you tonight, do base it on their population. The only one I'm aware of, Lebanon, does not have a limitation in their code, and they attempted, but it failed in this year, 2021, to cap it at 15 liquor license, but that failed. So, they still have no limitation. Brentwood has one for every 6,000, and then they have some restrictions on where they can be in which district. Franklin has one for every 3,000 people. Hendersonville is the same as we are. Mount Juliet only has three. Murfreesboro has one store for each 5,000, and Smyrna has a limit of five.
That shows you that there's a lot of different paths you could take. And really, to me, this discussion is kind of about taking the temperature and getting your feelings because there are actually other issues within that ordinance we probably need to step through and consider. But, you know, this is one that is key to know before we look at the ordinance as a whole, and so, that's why it was brought to you guys this evening.
So, tonight, I think we're just looking from the spotties to whether or not you want to allow additional liquor stores, and then we will research it and determine, and when your schedule is back, provide the available options.
When was the last time that the City of Gallatin issued a new liquor license?
Well, the only ones that have been issued in the last decade have been when an existing liquor store has sold. The last... The last, do you know, Danielle? I want to say Copper Steel was the last new one.
It was Copper Steel and then Red Carpet Liquors, but that was.
That was because they purchased it.
Even Copper Steel moved license from one place and rebranded it, is what you're saying.
No, Copper Steel did not. Red Carpet did.
Red Carpet did. But Copper Steel, how did they? How did they get the permission before somebody else did back in that day?
That had to do with purchasing the business and I guess there's some flow with that. I don't think, I think the license stays with the business and.
That makes sense.
They purchased one.
Could these laws be challenged in court?
Yeah, but Copper Steel actually did the same thing, but they stayed in the same location and.
I thought that was a new business when it came here, though, Copper Steel.
It was. That was the last new license that was issued.
I thought that's what Sean was asking.
No, but it has sold since then and also kept the license. I think Broadway Liquors has also done that. So there are several that have.
Just about all of them sold since we've done that and somebody else has taken them over. But Copper Steel was just a few years ago.
Steve had a question.
Is there a limitation on the size of the liquor store?
No.
Could these be challenged in court? These laws? Is there state law mandating anything? I mean, what if we said we're only going to have 10 attorneys for 100,000 people?
I suppose anything can be challenged in court. We do have a lot of people calling to open up liquor stores? Yes, we do.
Do we?
With growth, with growth, of course. New businesses want to come in and that's one of the businesses and we do get calls.
There are some areas that, you know, if you looked at, if you looked within a, you know, so many mile radius or whatever, you know, there are some areas that are probably not well-covered.
My question is, do we have to keep it because our, it's written divided by the population? Do we have to keep it that way or can we just do like Smyrna and limit it to a certain number?
You can do whatever you want to do as long as, you know, what our code right now currently says is we have to have proof of materially changed conditions. And so we need to set forth what those conditions are. Growth, other reasons, the new areas of the city are being developed, whatever you want to come up with. You can amend it and then at that time, you can, I think you can do a number, you can do by population. Most cities have it by population, but you could do like Smyrna and have just a number limit. But again, if you do that and you're going to increase the number, then we have to determine how do we, how do we issue that license or licenses.
If you went with that 6,000 number, we still wouldn't have an allowance for a new license per our current census. If you went with a 3,000 number, then you might have two allowable licenses. If you went with a, nothing would like, if you went with unlimited or if you went with a number cap, say you went with 10, we'd have three. So, you know, there's several different paths that you can take. But I think the question before you tonight is, is there the willingness of this body to do something to increase the number of licenses or do you want to leave it where it is?
Do we have five liquor stores now?
Seven.
Seven. Oh, okay.
Do we have any out in the newer parts that's on?
The furthest one, well, the two furthest west are going to be Plantation and Copper Steel. So if you look in the Kroger Marketplace Station camp area, that's going to be a few miles from the nearest.
I think we could certainly support it and I'd be interested in exploring it more, but I would like Ms. McCollie to see if we can have some type of auction for the rights to do that. The years that I've been here in business, I always assumed and been led to believe that there was a pecking order and there was a lottery years ago and there's a waiting list and you had to buy somebody's right. That's just what I've always assumed.
So you've essentially had to buy an existing liquor store to get one. I mean, that's been, I don't remember how it happened that Copper Steel got theirs. I think there was just.
After the new census?
Yeah, I mean, there was just availability and they were the only one who applied, I believe. But, you know, especially if you look at that west side of town, I guess there's one perspective in that, you know, there's a certain area out there that's fairly densely populated that they're likely going into our neighbor's community to purchase because it's closer.
Somebody in the queue in front of me. Okay.
I don't think so.
One thing that I wouldn't want to see is if we was able to put it out to bid, I wouldn't want to see somebody be able to buy that license and then turn around and re-put it on the market and sell it.
You can't, I don't think you can limit that. I mean, that's a, I mean, then you're really getting into the free market. I mean, we don't, we, I think you're going to have to treat everyone the same. We don't have that limitation on our current liquor stores and I don't think that we can restrict a new one. I mean, you might say you have to keep it, you know, X number.
We could certainly impose a time limit that they have to act upon the license or lose it one, right? Like a boat dock?
Probably, but when you start making a lot of restrictions like that, that's when we're going to possibly get more challenges.
Okay.
I'd be willing to look at increasing it if that's what you're asking us to do.
I'm not asking you to do anything. I'm not asking you to do what the pleasure of the body is. Okay, if it's 12,000 people per liquor store, we have more than, we have seven liquor stores? We're above that already.
Right.
Okay.
That's when it was increased, was when Copper Steel happened.
We'd have to go down, we'd have to go down to 5,000 probably.
And I think the reason that that happened, I mean, I recall just from attending meetings, was because of the line in grocery stores movement because they felt like they were going to suffer. Well, you know, since our population has grown so drastically, they've not, they may have suffered for a minute, but I think they're realizing great success now.
They're open seven days a week.
Yeah, and of course, we're having that discussion with no existing liquor stores represented. So I have a feeling that we're going to hear from some of them who are very concerned and rightly so. And so we need to consider, you know, what's the best for the community.
Sounds like it's where the locations are.
John D. was next to say something.
Well, we even volleyed about this morning in the department head meeting, what if we looked, you know, per square mile? But that's going to be really hard because how do you measure that? And some of them probably already are within, in those barriers in the more dense areas.
Okay, John?
Yeah. I just had a drink, I'm sorry. With the city increasing the way it is now, I don't have a problem with considering some form of increasing the stores. I don't know what form we would use.
I think what we need to do now is come back with the options. I think the second part of this question that I would ask is do you want to look at a path that immediately allows for additional licenses? And if so, how many? You know, that will help us kind of call out your options for how we might look at this.
Are we going to try to discuss this on the next work session?
Probably. Work session would be a good next place for it. So what I'm asking you is, do you want us to offer you options that would give you one more license or two more licenses or unlimited number of licenses?
Form a committee to discuss it and make suggestions?
A committee, I mean.
Well, this is your committee. I mean, according to the code, or you want to make a committee out of citizens? Who do you want to be on the committee? You can't, I would not suggest that you make a committee out of this body because then you have the sunshine law issues. I would not suggest that you do that and I suggest you do make, have all of those discussions with this body. If you want a committee of, I don't know who else, from staff you would want on a committee. Obviously, Ms. Kitchell and her office have been researching it. My office has been researching it and we've been in touch with the mayor. Do you want citizens on the committee? I mean, what are you looking for?
I don't know. I didn't realize it was going to be such a big issue, but.
I think that, I think that three of us.
I think we did a lot of input on this.
I think the three of us can bring some good options and I'm sure that this will be in the media and we'll be hearing from existing liquor stores and probably some citizens, too.
I have one question. Are we able to designate the area that they would be in? So that they wouldn't just all be in the same downtown?
Yes, but we would need to make sure that we wouldn't already have some that are in violation of whatever we set up.
Well, say it again, Susan, I think.
We wouldn't, we need to look at what we have currently and are there any that are very close? When you start, we could grandfather in, but when you start doing that, if you are challenged later, things that are grandfathered in, that proves that there's really not a necessity to have your restriction. So we need to really map out our current liquor stores, where they are and if you're wanting Ms. Kitchell or my office or combined to look at some type of restriction. Like, I know Brentwood has no more than three in the Northern End Commercial District and no more than three in the Southern End Commercial District. I don't know that we have a, that our districts are set up similarly, but we could work with planning to determine how we could do that.
Does anybody, if you've read anything on why they limit the number in that area?
In Brentwood?
Anywhere.
Why anyone limits?
To me, it's almost like protectionism.
Yeah, you're, I mean, you're talking about free enterprise and but it's not for the liquor store.
That's why I said it was kind of antiquated because I think back in the day, it kind of had to do with moral.
That is an option. You can remove it altogether and let the market control. That is an option.
I was in the convenience store business for years and I always wondered why they were protected and we weren't.
That is, that is an absolute option that would be very simple to implement.
That was my first point.
So this is going to come back.
Will y'all bring us back to break today?
Or some options, not recommendations.
Okay, thank you. Number 15, James Fenton.
Yes, I'd like to move forward. Brittany Early, a Gallatin resident, to be a member of the Industrial Development Board and the Health, Education, Housing Foundation Board.
Second.
Hey, we've got a motion from Councilwoman Hayes, a second by Councilwoman Fann. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries. Thank you. And then we have James again for number 16.
Yes, we're asking permission to apply for a CDBG grant. This is a grant to rehabilitate a portion of the Shalom Zone to be used as a daycare. The Shalom Zone Board has approved moving the application forward and the Board of Gallatin Daycare has agreed to come onboard as an operator. Actually, there'll be a public hearing in these chambers Friday afternoon at 2:00. As a reminder, these are federal dollars